It is now five thirty, September the seventeenth, twenty nineteen. We will now call for order to meeting for the City of Statesboro Council. We have our invocation in pleasure of leaders, my councilman Sam Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Frank. The creator of the universe, I want to say thank you. Thank you for allowing us to come into this place to recall the Statesboro Council Chancellors. Father, I wanted to thank you and ask you to continue to guide us and lead us. Let us re-sit down and raise it together, for the benefit of all our citizens, our visitors, and our staff. We invite you here, knowing you're already here. We thank you for peace, courage, and wisdom as you go forward. Together, all God's children say, amen.
Praise the Lord. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Statesboro, we will move down to Agenda Item Three, this is the Public Office Ceremony. And we will swear in Mr. Leo Horn, she is our new City Clerk. If you can. I state your name.
I, Leo Horn.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge all duties.
Will faithfully discharge all duties.
Devoting only as City Clerk of the City of Statesboro.
Devoting only as the City Clerk of the City of Statesboro.
During my continuance in office.
During my continuance in office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you. All right, we'll go out and move down to Agenda Item Three, Mr. Horn, on the input comments.
No, ma'am.
Okay. We move down to Agenda Item Five, which is consideration of motion to approve the consent agenda, which is Item Eight, approval minutes for our September third council minutes, our September the third executive session minutes, and a consideration of a motion to declare surplus and disposal of a nineteen seventy-nine GMC dump truck in Streets Division of Public Works and Engineering Department, and of course, its purchase policy, section three, vehicle import, surplus, and disposal. Is there a motion to approve?
Send it, Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor. I'll actually move down to Agenda Item Six, which is the second reading and consideration of a motion to approve ordinance twenty nineteen dash eight, an ordinance in chapter thirty-eight of the Statesboro Code of Orders, adding Article Seven and establishing the community redevelopment tax incentive program. I see we have no here, I'll go ask Mr. Penny for comments.
Mayor, members of the council, I know this is for the second reading, but I would like to ask the council to consider to defer this matter until either the second meeting in October or November, the first meeting in November. What I would like to propose to the council is that at the work session in October, that we would have more discussion about this proposed ordinance and receive some input from folks from the DIP community and some other folks that have had experience with it. But I'd also like to look at our ability so that I can share with you how we would be able to implement it. So I would just like to be able to do staff some staff work and report back to council. And I'd like to ask you to defer this matter until October.
Okay. Counselor?
Ms. Penny, I was going to recommend a second reading anyway, at least one more reading, to get some additional feedback from the downtown development forty, including the commission of the new bureau, habitat for humanity, and a few other things that I've heard from them to do. So we have to close the budget in the day of this meeting, at least until the second meeting in October.
Okay. All right, one for the pen and jet, and we will have my first motion on the floor. Ms. Penny, we want to make sure that we get those in DIP for the work session, so we have staff, which I feel we can get, and all this, okay? All right, is there a second for the motion?
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll move down to Agenda Item Seven, which is presentation of voting on city special event permit requirements. We want to call Mr. Travis Prior forward, and he's the person that was interested in seeing our special events, or in some depth.
How y'all doing? Travis Prior, the founder of DAPW Inc. Basically, what it is, is a company, a small company that does DJ services, a lot of DJ services, and lighting for state restaurants around the county. Under that hat, we have Rock My Comedy Jam. Here recently, I've been doing outside comedy shows here, two which were under Statesboro Comedy Jam, and three were under Rock My Comedy Jam. We've grown so much till we're starting to look for bigger places to do our comedy shows. Here recently, my last show, I brought a pretty big comedian out, and I was trying to do it over the hollow vine, but ended up having to go back to my old spot because of some fact that there's no alcohol ordinances in place to where people like me can sell alcohol and make my money back off the overhead for the comedians and all that kind of stuff. So in turn, I really feel like that alcohol ordinance, if y'all put alcohol ordinance in place for a small business, I think it would turn more revenue for the City of Statesboro and small businesses.
All right, any discussion by council, any questions by council? All right, is there a motion to move this forward for staff to put together ordinance for council review? I'd like to use my little tool. Okay. So are you saying you want to see council put, staff put together a first reading, just for us to review? Okay. All right, is there a second? Just simply to, please, okay?
Wait, no. No, no, there's a difference between us writing ordinance and doing some kind of a review. I'll be honest, at this stage, I would not be for changing the ordinance. And all respect to Mr. Prior, you know, we have license holders who have insurance, they pay their licensing fees, they have location, they train their staff, they do tips training, they train their bouncers, they have to get background checks. And so if we open this up to have unlicensed establishments selling alcohol, you know, just randomly here and there, it really does a disservice to all those businesses who have a full license and do all the work that's necessary to prevent some of the things that we've had happen in the history of Statesboro. So if we're directing Mr. Penny to do some kind of an analysis or something like that, but to write an ordinance, I would not, I would not be in favor of changing the ordinance at this time.
Okay. All right, duly noted?
I wanted to just verify something. I wasn't exactly looking for ordinance, or just, I actually wanted to hear.
A recommendation from staff?
Yes.
So that, you want to modify your recommendation so that we can have staff look into it, have them put together a recommendation?
Just moving.
Okay. And so I think the motion is to be, a motion to have staff move forward to discuss findings in regards to, is that special event permit?
You sound okay? Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, I'm not saying write a new ordinance.
Okay.
Mr. Penny, was this what we were addressing in our work session?
Word.
Yes.
Yes, sir. It is.
So I can have a good time?
How much time do you need?
Where do you feel comfortable with?
Yeah, physically. Yes, Statesboro, not as busy as I am. Again, the work sessions that we're trying to do, we do them on the second meeting.
Okay.
So if you give us till the second meeting again in October, then that's what we'll come back to.
Okay, and you want to add this to our work session agenda as well?
Yes.
All right, so we want to have staff move forward for the findings, that's what we're going to do. And to report back for the work session.
So can I ask another question, Mayor?
Go ahead.
So does this mean us doing some surveys of some other communities, to see how they, is that what you're asking me?
What we would like to have happen is, well, just take a look at what other communities are doing in regards to this, and then we want to find out the best adaptation, see what it looks like for the City of Statesboro, and let's bring that information back to that work session in October. That way council has the ability to review it and then make a decision as to whether or not we need to move forward in the following council, council. Okay. All right, so you comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay, all right, and so you want to make that motion, and Councilman Jones, are you comfortable with this?
I am, yes.
Okay, all right, Councilman Duke, Councilman Yawn, like you got, and Boy, you got comfortable with doing a work session, we kind of like to look at it?
I mean, I'm willing, I'm willing to look at it. I will say, I'm not of the proclivity to change our special event ordinance as it currently sits, because, or the problem in the past event is having establishments saying they're one thing and operating as another. And a special event permit, you let it become too flat, can become, can become that. And again, it puts a, it's a, how do I put this, it's a detriment, or it detracts from those business owners that are doing all the things that are required, where it does, you know, to do this in an unlicensed place doesn't require the same, same commitment, doesn't require the same training, doesn't require the same education, doesn't require the same insurance, so, you know, I don't mind you looking at it, but I would say at this point, I'm not, I personally am not looking to say the special event permit, a less permit.
Okay.
Or more permits, if you would.
All right, and knowing that we do have first, and we do have a motion, and we have a second, all of those in favor for the staff moving forward to very information for the second, the work session, the second meeting in October? Do you have any of that? Say aye.
Aye.
All right, those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. All right, and any abstentions? Abstentions? Okay. All right, it's four to one vote, and let's show that we're going to move forward on Agenda Item Seven, with the considerations in the work session. All right, we'll move down to Agenda Item Eight, which is a public hearing, consideration of a motion to approve application for alcohol license, section six five. The two, the two items are A, which is the hangout, myself is Alice, it's the Seventy Gotta Drive, Statesboro, Georgia, and B is five block store, Lindsey Martin, twenty-eight fifty-five, Northside Drive West, Statesboro, Georgia, is real. All right, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Aloud.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all of those in favor? All right. All right, onward.
No issues, Mayor.
Chief?
No issues.
Over, chief?
Yeah, regardless of hangout, our position hasn't changed in the last meeting.
Okay. Okay.
I think our PD.
Okay. All right, is there anyone here to speak for, in the item eight?
There are?
Yes.
Come forward.
Hi, I'm Mr. Bob Seidman, I'm a homeowner, and I suppose I'm really interested in making a deal. First, I want to apologize, since last time I was here, I talked to the chief, and he said, yeah, that I popped and tatted his head a little bit. If that was the case, I'd have been to, because I never want it to feel that way, because I hate the same thing bad about it. And he's always been willing to, we can talk to him, so that was, that was my intention. It was all about the fact that it was painting the picture that my business goes to new since then. I've never breathed back since.
All right. Thank you.
If you want to say that.
Yeah, we got a process. All right. You're in favor?
All right.
All right, good deal. Is there anyone here to speak against? Seeing that there's no one here to speak against, is there a motion to close the hearing?
Aloud.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
All right, is there any discussion by council? All right, seeing that there's no discussion by council, is there a motion to approve? Is there a motion to deny?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? All right, let's show that Agenda Item Eight, A, has not passed. We'll move down to Agenda Item Eight, B, which is five block store, Lindsey Martin, twenty-eight fifty-five, Northside Drive. Is there, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Aloud.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We can, if you want to have public comments, we do that after. Plan and zoning.
No issues, Mayor.
Fire inspection.
No issues.
Police.
No issues, sir.
City attorney.
No issues.
All right, is there anyone here to speak for the request? All right, seeing that there's no one here to speak for the request, is there anyone here to speak against the request? Seeing that there's no one here to speak against the request, is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Is there any discussion by council? Seeing that there's no discussion by council, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? All right, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Let, let's show that Agenda Item Eight, B, has passed, we'll move down to Agenda Item Nine. Agenda Item Nine has two sections, it's a public hearing, consideration of a motion to approve application for section six dash seventeen D, exemptions to open container for vision. This is for Agenda Item Nine, Eight, it's Eagle Creek Brewing Company, one oh six Savannah Avenue, Suite D, Mr. Franklin Desmond, and then Agenda Item Ninety, it's the Blue Room, eighteen thirty, Chandler Road, Statesboro, Georgia. Is there a motion to open the public hearing for Agenda Item Nine, Eight?
For you.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Plan and zoning.
No issues, Mayor.
Fire inspection.
No issues.
Police.
No issues, sir.
City attorney.
No issues.
Is there anyone here to speak for the request? Is there anyone here to speak against the request? Seeing that there is none, is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
All right, any discussion from council? Seeing that there's no discussion from council, is there a motion to approve Agenda Item Nine, Eight?
So moved.
Is, okay, who's?
Second.
Okay, all of us in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll move down to Agenda Item Nine, B, the Blue Room, eighteen thirty, Chandler Road. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
All right, plan and zoning.
No issues, Mayor.
Fire inspection.
No issues.
Police.
No issues, sir.
City attorney.
No issues.
Is there anyone here to speak for? Is there anyone here to speak against? Seeing that there's no one here to speak for or against, is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Is there any discussion by council?
No second.
Oh, excuse me, second? All of us in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you guys. All right, is there any discussion by council? Seeing that there's no discussion by council, is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let's show that Agenda Item Nine, B, has passed. We'll move down to Agenda Item Ten, which is a public hearing, consideration of a motion to approve application nineteen dash oh eight dash oh one, Jason Ray's request, a variance from Article eleven, section eleven oh two G, to reduce the level of lot size requirements for property to be considered for the highway-oriented commercial zoning district in order to utilize the existing commercial building as an automotive services repair shop, oh point three six acres, located at one thirty-seven Parrish Street. Agenda Item Ten, B, is an application, is an application, RZ nineteen dash oh seven dash oh two, that Mr. Jason Ray's request is a zoning map amendment, a point six acres, located at one thirty-seven East Parrish Street, from commercial retail to highway-oriented as a commercial. Zoning district in order to utilize the existing commercial building as an automotive services repair shop, we're moving to Agenda Item Ten, C, which is an application, five, nineteen dash oh eight dash oh three, Jason Ray's request, a variance from Article eleven, section eleven oh two C, to reduce the required front yard setback, in order to utilize the existing commercial building as an automotive services repair shop, oh point three six acres, located at one thirty-seven Parrish Street. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
All right, and we'll turn it over to Mr. Penny.
Second.
Excuse me, second? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Penny, if you'll give us an insight and staff direction.
Thank you, Ms. Penny. Mayor, council, the first Agenda Item Ten, this evening, for planning and developing apartment, it is a zoning map amendment request and two zoning variance request for one thirty-seven East Parrish Street. The applicant is proposing the utilization of an existing commercial building as a tire repair shop, which is not allowed to use under the subject property's current CR commercial model zoning. Automotive services, such as service stations, repair shops, and automotive parts and accessory sales are allowable, uses specific to the HOC, Highway Oriented Commercial District. Therefore, the applicant requests a variance from Article eleven, section eleven oh two C, of Statesboro zoning ordinance, which requires a minimum lot area of twenty thousand square feet per structure in the HOC district. The applicant is proposing a lot size of approximately fifteen thousand six hundred eighty-two square feet. Next, the applicant requests a zoning map amendment for the CR commercial retail zoning district, HOC Highway Oriented Commercial zoning district, in order to utilize the existing commercial building as a tire repair shop, which is not allowed to use under the subject property's current CR zoning designation. Lastly, the applicant is requesting a variance from Article eleven, section eleven oh two C, of the Statesboro zoning ordinance, which requires that there be a minimum building setback distance of sixty feet from the street line in the HOC district. The applicant is proposing no front setback distance from the street line to the existing building, per the reported flat of record with the Fuller County clerk's reports. The existing commercial building's front canopy structure encroaches over the subject site, the property line of Bud and U.S. Highway three oh one, and that's under exhibit D recorded flat, your staff report. A little background information on this request, the parcel is currently occupied by a commercial building, which has been vacant for the past three months for the applicant. The building was last utilized as a painting contractor business. Historical uses have included contracting businesses, blast fabrication, and automotive services uses. The parcel was originally developed as a gas automotive services station in nineteen fifty. One important note on this special, on this request, the existing commercial building was originally developed for automotive services use. Since the building was constructed, the City of Statesboro zoning map has been revised, thus creating a non-performing structure on this parcel, in order for the existing commercial building to operate as an automotive service use, similar to past historical uses of the subject property. The applicant will require the approval of zoning variances and a zoning map to do so. If you will turn your attention to the monitors for a brief presentation on these requests. Location map, look at one thirty-seven East Parrish Street, view some of the surrounding properties, including the subject site, picture one at the top left. Some more surrounding property uses, these are both uses on either side of the one thirty-seven East Parrish Street property, and some more surrounding property photos looking in both directions along East Parrish Street. Exhibit D, the recorded flat, I've got the encroachment of the front canopy structure kind of outlined in red there, as you can see, so over time, and eventually just wound up being an encroachment, as G-Dot came in and took some more right away from out in front of this property. Surrounding zoning map, and an old historical photo of the subject property operating as an automotive services use. Staff has reviewed this, or these requests, and has recommended approval of applications be nineteen oh eight oh one, RZ nineteen oh seven oh two, and B nineteen oh eight oh three. In addition, at the regularly scheduled meeting held on September third, two thousand nineteen, at five p.m., Planning Commission noted four oh, recommend approval of the zoning map amendment, zoning variances requested by applications be nineteen oh eight oh one, RZ nineteen oh seven oh two, and B nineteen oh eight oh three, with the following conditions. Approval of this zoning map amendment does not grant site and/or building plan approval for future renovations to the existing building and/or the new construction of structures on the subject property, will be required to meet all city ordinances and applicable building codes. Number two, permissible uses shall be restricted unless allowed by right, as regulated by the City of Statesboro zoning ordinance and the HOC zoning district. Number three, the existing building's canopy structure shall not encroach further into the building setback area unless authorized by variance. And I believe the applicant is present to see if he can answer any questions that he might have.
All right, thank you. Does anyone here speak for the request?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Tony Carlson, I'm the special prosecutor, I represent for you, all of this property, he has since moved to New York, and would not be able to be here to address himself. So what we're looking at is, is almost various, we just want to put the property back to the block. So what we're looking at is, uh, on this variance, we just want to put the property back to the lot which was originally designed for him, so pictures of it better, it should have real well. I do have people in mind that will go ahead and protect our, uh, this building, which we're pretty much, uh, got another business in town. We realize that through time and just oversight, probably it was got wezzoned into a CR which probably should have been an HOC. We're just asking that y'all take a serious look at it and agree that, uh, that the best you swallow is the HOCs. We have a wide range of people that, um, in the future, we can rent this building to, uh, the current ten options here, whatever does work out, there'll be a wide range of people to get out to, uh, keep this business going.
Is there, is there anyone here to speak against? Seeing that there's no one here to speak against, um, is there a motion to close the hearing? All those in favor?
Alright.
Is there any discussion by council?
I just said, uh, for, uh, like, uh, what's the number, acreage for each of them?
Twenty thousand square feet.
So I can say about point three six.
Uh, so they're right at fifteen thousand six eighty-two square.
And you, you're, and part of that is because, uh, three oh one took part of their property.
Correct, that's a part of it too, and this parcel was originally developed back in the nineteen fifties prior to our zoning ordinance adoption. So therefore, um, it wouldn't have meant, it was possible, it wouldn't have meant a lot of side regulations there as well.
And this is the original property structure, is that correct?
Correct, yes sir, it was originally built back in the nineteen fifties as a gas station.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilor Boyd, uh, would there be enough further person for council, councilor Boyd to sit you a distance?
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve all three applications, nineteen dash eight oh one, uh, dash oh eight, dash oh one, dash oh two, and three.
Okay, alright, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Alright, thank you. I'll move down to Agenda Item eleven. Agenda Item eleven is a public hearing, consideration of a motion to approve application five nineteen dash oh eight dash oh four. Jackon Hayward requests a variance from Article seven dash C, section seven oh three dash C eight, to reduce the minimum lot size requirement for property to be considered for the R ten, uh, residential, uh, single-family residential. Zoning district in order to allow the placement of a mobile home on four two acre lot at four thirty six Trimble Lane. Uh, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Alright, Owen is here.
Yes sir, thank you Mayor. This request, B nineteen oh eight oh four, it's a zoning variance request located in four thirty six Trimble Lane. The applicant and the landowner are the same, Jackon Hayward. It's in Council District number one, that's Council Boyd's district. The applicant requests a variance from Article seven C, section seven oh three C eight of the State Borough zoning ordinance, requires a minimum lot area of ten thousand square feet. The applicant is proposing a minimum lot size of eight thousand seven hundred twelve square feet in order to allow for the placement of a mobile home residence. Per Article seven C, section seven oh three C eight, a lot held in single and separate ownership on the effective date of this ordinance having an area of less than ten thousand square feet or a width less than seventy feet, a dwelling may be built thereon when authorized as a variance. A little bit of background on this request, the parcel is currently vacant land with heavy overgrowth and a partial fire damage structure. Land uses in the needed area are primarily dominated by single-family residences, which include mobile manufactured and stick-built homes. The applicant previously owned a mobile home located at this address, however, the home suffered severe fire damage over three years ago and has since been mostly removed from the property. Since the home did not start reconstruction within one year from the date the home was destroyed, property owner has exceeded the twelve-month grandfather clause. Therefore, the zoning variance will be required in order to allow residential dwelling on the subject property. Uh, some additional background information on this one, uh, that's an important note. Per the requirements of Article twenty-five, section twenty-five oh two, that's our manufactured mobile home, uh, section of our zoning ordinance, the placement of a mobile home on the subject property shall be permitted as the dwelling compares favorably to site builds and other housing in the immediate general area within the same zoning district or area. Proposed mobile home is similar in size, siding material, roof material, foundation, and general aesthetic appearance to existing buildings. The proposed use is not expected to have an adverse effect on property values in the area given the surrounding uses, please note that the staff has not consulted a professional appraisal regarding the impact of the requested zoning variance on property value. And if you'll turn your attentions to the screen, I've got a brief presentation on this zoning variance request. Here's a location map, four thirty six Trimble Lane. Some surrounding property photos, this is the subject site as of a couple weeks ago. Uh, and then picture number two in the top left corner is an historical image, uh, taken some time ago after the fire had occurred appears. Uh, some view of the surrounding properties to the west of the subject site in the bottom right-hand corner picture. Uh, some more surrounding properties, these are located predominantly to the south of the subject site and, uh, abut them to the, to the rear. And some view of the surrounding properties, uh, within the neighborhood and then just to the north of the subject parcel are light industrial uses. Now, here's a sketch plan submitted by the applicant, uh, black and white, but it's submitted to just verify that she is going to hear all the setbacks in the R ten residential district front side and rear. Proposed architectural rendering from the applicant. Some proposed floor plans as well. And that is it, after reviewing this application request, staff has recommended approval of this variance requested by application B nineteen oh eight oh four. Additionally, at the regularly scheduled meeting held on September third, two thousand nineteen at five P.M., the Planning Commission voted four O to recommend approval of the variance requested by application B nineteen oh eight oh four with the following conditions. Approval of this variance is not granted site and/or building plan approval as submitted, project will be required to meet all city ordinances and applicable building codes. Proposed mo- Number two, proposed mobile home dwellings shall maintain all area width and yard regulations of the R ten single-family zoning district, which is regulated by Article seven C of the State Borough zoning ordinance. Number three, the mobile home must bear the seal of compliance with the federal manufactured home construction and safety standard established by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Number four, the mobile home must be, mu- will be required to meet the following minimum requirements. All towing devices, wheels, axles, and hitches must be removed. At each exit door, there must be a landing that is a minimum of thirty-six by thirty-six inches. Root shop, a minimum of a two to twelve root pitch shall have surface of wood shakes, asphalt composition, wood shingles, concrete, fiberglass, or metal tile slate built up gravel, materials or other materials approved by the zoning administrator. The exterior siding materials shall consist of wood, masonry, concrete, stucco, masonite, metal, or vinyl lap or other materials with light appearance. Mobile homes shall be constructed to qualify for the wind zone two rating. And lastly, the proposed dwelling unit shall be required to obtain a certificate of occupancy from the zoning code administrator or as designated, which shall before issuing a certificate of occupancy determine that the structure is in compliance with all other zoning requirements and city ordinances. And I'm not sure if you have, Minister Stephen, to answer any questions that you might have, if there aren't.
Alright, is there anyone here to speak for the request? Alright, is there anyone here to speak against? Seeing that there's no one here to speak for or against, is there a motion to close the hearing? Is there a second? All, all those in favor?
Alright.
Alright, is there any council discussion?
Uh, if you guys haven't been in that area, there's a number of mobile homes and I, I gotta say that this, uh, this building, this mobile home would be, will be improved.
Any further discussion?
I think it's, it's a bunch of industrial property.
So there is some industrial uses directly to the north that you see on the location map that's on the screen and then all the, uh, single-family residential units are primarily mobile home, like, back south of the parcel.
Did you ever know any complaints to the mayor?
No sir, not since the sign went up.
Alright, is there any further discussion by council? Alright, uh, so Mr. Boyd, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Alright, is there a staff?
Yes.
Staff objections? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Alright.
Um, right, let's show that Agenda Item eleven has passed, we'll move down to Agenda Item twelve, which is a public hearing, consideration of a motion to approve application five nineteen dash oh eight dash oh six. Bricks Glass Company requests a variance from Article thirty, section thirty twelve E regarding tree protection within any required setback or buffer area in the downtown district four point seven oh seven acres property located at three oh one South Main Street. Is there a motion to open the public hearing? So moved, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Owen.
Thank you Mayor, yes, uh, this is a variance, our Agenda Item number twelve, this is variance nineteen oh eight oh six. Zoning variance request, three oh one, Main Street. Uh, the applicant and the landowner is both Bricks Glass Company. Uh, this parcel or this request is located in Council District number two, that's Council Jones District. Proposal and background, the applicant is proposing a, uh, approximately thirteen hundred square foot addition to an existing commercial building, an alternative access drive, landscaping improvements, sidewalk facilities, and associated site improvements. In order to allow the proposed expansion of the commercial building on the subject property, the applicant is requesting a variance in order to come into performance with the design standards Article thirty of the State Borough zoning ordinance. In November two thousand seventeen, the applicant has issued demolition permit number fifty-six for a single-family residence located correctly adjacent into the west of the Bricks Glass building. An historical image of the single-family residence prior demolition has been included under exhibit C, photos of the subject site within the staff report. The applicant was unaware that demolition permit did not authorize certain land clearing activities such as tree removal. Since issuance of the demolition permit, the applicant has removed the single-family residence and cleared the entire lot. Under Article thirty, section thirty twelve E, trees greater than twenty inches in diameter shall be known as heritage trees. Further, any heritage tree which is removed shall be replaced with a minimum of two four-inch caliber-shaped trees prior clearing the lot, staff had estimated ten to fifteen trees classified as heritage trees were in existence. Prior to the approval of the building permit for this project, city staff, partners engineering, and hog construction on efforts to form a landscaping and tree plan, which informs of the spirit of Article thirty, section thirty twelve E, as well as meets and exceeds the urban forest humidification and conservation ordinance of the city of State Borough. Therefore, the applicant is requesting the following, a variance from Article thirty, section thirty twelve E regarding tree protection within any, any required setback or buffer area in the downtown district. An important note on this one, um, under Article thirty, um, the applicant would have normally been required to replant approximately twenty to thirty trees with a minimum of four-inch caliber shade tree classification. Uh, that many trees on that small lot would have been detrimental to the health of the trees. Uh, so therefore, we worked together within to come up with a landscaping plan. And if you'll turn your attention to the monitors, I will, uh, show you the landscaping plan as well as the rest of the presentation on this request. Uh, location map, three oh one, South Main Street. These were two parcels not too long ago, they have since been combined into one. So you'll have that parcel that abutted South Walnut Street now is adjoining to the one that was forming on South Main. Um, some surrounding, uh, property photos is a view of the area where B nineteen oh eight oh six is being requested and as you'll see in picture number two, an historical image of the, uh, property that was there prior to any land clearing demolition activities on that, um, same vacant lot in picture number one. Um, some, some more surrounding property photos, Bricks Glass building, uh, used to the rear of the commercial site. Uh, some more surrounding property photos. Additional surrounding property photos. And the last, they're adjacent neighbor, South. Uh, the proposed landscaping plan that they have submitted, uh, we've worked, uh, they've worked with staff and Robert Siemens of the Streets and Parks Division to come up with a plan, um, for this area. I'd like to point out that they're not only making landscaping improvements to the lot located in the rear of the building, but they're also making improvements along South Main Street, uh, at the front of the property as well. And the reported flat as exhibit D. Staff has reviewed this application and has recommended approval of application B nineteen oh eight oh six. In addition, at the regularly scheduled meeting held on September third, two thousand nineteen at five P.M., Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the variance requested by application B nineteen oh eight oh six with the following staff conditions. Uh, number one, approval of this variance does not grant site and/or building plan approval as submitted, project will be required to meet all city ordinances and applicable building codes. Number two, development shall adhere to design standards for the downtown district specifically in regulations Article thirty of the State Borough zoning ordinance. Number three, staff approval of the landscape plan prepared by Parker Engineering in date of August twelfth, two thousand nineteen. And lastly, number four, prior to the final issuance of a certificate of occupancy, staff shall inspect and approve of all landscaping improvements for the approved landscaping and tree plan. And I believe, I know the applicant is here to see if he can answer any questions that he might have. I think Robert Siemens is here as well. He can speak better to the landscaping plan than I can.
Alright, thank you Owen, alright, is there anyone here to speak for?
Good afternoon, I'm Lindsay Thomas, I'm partner engineering and I'm representing Bricks Glass in this variance request. The purpose of this project is to expand this business by thirteen hundred twenty square feet to provide an alterna- alternative entrance off of South Walnut Street. There was an existing house in trade on this property. The owner obtained a demolition permit in November of twenty seventeen, but was unaware that the demolition permit not covered tree removal. The least, solution to this problem is to replant trees and landscape the site. I have included this in the landscaping and tree plan, which exceeds the current tree ordinance. For the ordinance, the tree can be required is one thousand two hundred seventy-four square feet and we have provided eight thousand five hundred fifty square feet of tree can be. In addition, the total green space required for the ordinance is one thousand eight hundred thirty-two square feet and we have provided sixteen thousand one hundred ninety-seven square feet of green space. Robert Siemens, the streets and parks superintendent, has agreed the landscaping to that. On behalf of the owner, we, we apologize for this issue. It was not as intense as certain goals of the law, so in great effort towards then nature is important.
Is there anyone here to speak against?
Mayor, I actually, I could want to add one more thing, I did work, did check in with Allen, the DSDA authority, and they had recommended approval of this application request.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here to speak against? Seeing that there's no one here to speak against, is there a motion to close the hearing? Is there a second? Second. All those in favor?
Alright.
Alright, uh, is there any council discussion?
I'm posting references to the sidewalk, you know, you need some sidewalks, that's something to plan to do.
Yes sir, so there's going to be sidewalk improvements already planned to go along, um, West Jones Avenue right there. And then also, they are planning on putting a sidewalk along South Walnut two on the rear of the property. Uh, sidewalk improvements are required at the downtown standards district on all public right-of-way. So they'll have sidewalks on all three sides.
Lots of green space.
Yes sir, lots of green space.
Very good strategy. Improvement to where you're trying to work there, improvement area.
Okay, is there any further discussion by council? Alright, Councilor Jones, you're at this East Borough district, so if you would like to make a motion?
I'll move.
Alright, is there a second? All those in favor?
Alright.
We'll move down to Agenda Item fourteen. Agenda Item fourteen, a public hearing, consideration of a motion to approve, application five nineteen dash oh eight oh eight, Josh Wickfield requests a variance from Article seven, section seven oh three A to reduce the required left-side yard setback in order to allow the development of residential units to serve the West District project on point four three acres located at one ten Bull Street. Thirteen B is an applicant's application, RZ nineteen dash oh eight dash oh nine. Josh Wickfield requests a zoning map amendment of point three acres located at one ten Bull Street from R eight single-family residential to R four high-density residential. Zoning district in order to allow the development of residential units to serve the West District project. Um, thirteen C is application, RZ nineteen dash oh eight dash ten. Josh Wickfield requests a zoning map amendment of one point oh six acres located at one sixteen Bull Street from R eight, uh, single-family residential to R four high-density residential. Zoning district in order to allow the development of residential units to serve the West District project. Is there a motion to open the public hearing? Is there a motion to open the public hearing? Two seconds. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Over.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. This request involves zoning variance and two zoning map amendments located between two separate addresses. Parcels are located adjacent to each other, one ten and one sixteen Bullock Street. The applicant is Josh Whitfield, the owners are Robert Stewart and Marion and Martha Stewart. Combined parcels are, one parcel zero point four three acres and the other one is one point zero six acres. These requests are located in council district number two, that's Councilman Jones District. The proposal, the applicant requests a zoning map amendment from the R eight single-family residential zoning districts to the R four high-density residential zoning district in order to develop multi-unit residential buildings which are not in allowed use in the existing zoning designation. Additionally, the zoning map amendment request will require zoning variance as the sideyard setbacks are strictly regulated in the R four district to the subject property's current R eight zoning designation. The one ten Bullock Street property contains an existing multi-unit residential building which currently does not encourage a sideyard setback under the R eight zoning regulations. If this parcel were to be rezoned in the R four district, this building would encourage the sideyard setback, thus requiring the approval of the variance prior to the applicant's requested zoning map amendment. The developer's proposing to rezone and subsequently combine a zero point four three acre parcel and a one point zero six acre parcel in order to allow construction of single-family and two-family residential dwellings serving the West District development project. The developer's proposing a total of fourteen new residential units. Therefore, the applicant is requesting the following: application being nineteen oh eight oh eight, a variance from Article seven, section seven hundred three A, to reduce the left sideyard setback from twenty feet to thirteen point nine six feet. And also, applications, RZ nineteen oh eight oh nine, RZ nineteen oh eight ten, zoning map amendments from the R eight single-family residential zoning district to the R four high-density residential district for two parcels to plan in order to allow construction of residential units serving the West District development. A little bit of background on both of these parcels. Both parcels are currently occupied by various single-family structures which include two-family dwellings, a detached single-family dwelling, armed ports, storage sheds, and other accessory structures. For the Bullock County Tax Assessor's website, the residential buildings were built between nineteen twenty-five and nineteen sixty. And if you turn your attention to the monitor, I've got brief presentation on these requests. Location maps, one ten and one sixteen Bullock Street, as you can see right across from the Whitfield signs, building in West District Phase One. This is the view of the subject property, one ten Bullock Street, looking south from Bullock Street. This is also an area where the sideyard variance is being requested along that left sideyard line. Picture number two is kind of a panoramic picture of both properties sitting side by side, one ten and one sixteen Bullock Street. And then picture number three in the bottom right is the one sixteen Bullock Street address and the area where RZ nineteen oh eight, nineteen oh eight ten is being requested. Some surrounding property photos. Picture number four is the property that's adjacent to one ten Bullock Street, and then of course, across the street, you've got West District Phase One. Some more surrounding property pictures. The property does abut these stations in the rear, as you'll see in picture number seven. And a conceptual site plan submitted by the applicant showing their proposed conceptual layout. I've highlighted in, or excuse me, outlined in red, the sideyard variance, as you can see, it came requested, the reduction to thirteen point nine six if they're successful in getting the R four zoning. And you will see here that they are only keeping two existing buildings. Existing building sixteen is a two-unit building. Existing building number fifteen is a single-unit building. And then the rest are new construction, one through fourteen. And also, some proposed architectural renderings from the applicant as well. Staff has reviewed this, these requests, and has recommended approval of applications B nineteen oh eight oh eight and RZ nineteen oh eight oh nine and RZ nineteen oh eight dash ten with conditions. At the regularly scheduled meeting held on September third, two thousand nineteen at five p.m., the planning commission votes four over to recommend approval of the zoning map amendment and zoning variance requested by applications B nineteen oh eight oh eight, RZ nineteen oh eight oh nine, and RZ nineteen oh eight ten with following staff conditions. Number one, approval of the zoning variance and zoning map amendments does not grant site management or building plan approval as submitted. Projects will be required at all city ordinances and applicable building codes. Number two, for any new construction of residential dwellings, the building might be something I see one story with the exception of the existing residential buildings or construction constructed prior to September third, two thousand nineteen. Number three, density not to exceed seventeen dwelling units. Number four, staff approval of the conceptual site plan prepared by Maxwell Reddick and Associates dated August sixth, two thousand nineteen. And lastly, staff review and approval in the subsequent recording of the Bullock County Clerk's Office of the Combination Flat of the parcels addressed, one ten and one sixteen Bullock Street, prior to any construction commencement of the proposed development. And I believe that the applicant is here to see to any questions that you might have. In addition, Allen Bolger in the downtown Statesboro Development Board already had reviewed this request and recommended approval as well.
Thank you, Owen. Is there anyone here to speak for, or listen? Josh, I want to ask you to put a pen in there. Is there anyone here to speak against this request? Seeing that it's not, is there a motion to close the public hearing? Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Is there any discussion by council? Hold on, Josh, don't move yet. Is there any discussion by council?
No, no, your question I had, Owen, is that red square you identified that basically is a setback for an existing building?
Correct. So that is the existing building in their R eight current zoning designation. They would not need a variance because they are less restricted, but once you go to R four, they're more restricted. So he, what he goes from ten feet to twenty feet.
You can just put a half so.
I know this. We met or not, thank you.
Um, is there any discussion by council?
A question for, Josh, reference to the new unit plan, but there were two bedrooms or three units, or how far that went?
Obviously, we got to go through that part of the first day with one bedroom is kind of the focus of the layout that we're actually working on for us at this point. We're trying to, we've got a lot of businesses that are looking to come there. Our business is looking better than employees now. The building is going to be done by the end of the year, to bring those efficient employees there. There's a huge interest in being able to walk to work in the name of, so that's what we're trying to create. We've got a lot of new sidewalks on the block to facilitate that. And, but we'll have more coming that we need to make in downtown as well to connect that. I didn't realize until I moved there that, yeah, walking down the center of the road to downtown several days, but having us being able to have residents walk to work is a huge traction. What we're trying to do is support the businesses, the restaurants, that all kind of, yeah, get people there first, and then it drives the buck, the buck, so.
Any further discussion by council? Councilman Jones, this is the board district.
Recommendation with the staff, my motion is with the staff recommendations.
All right, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's show that agenda item thirteen, A, B, and C has passed. All right, thank you, Josh, thank you. All right, we move down to agenda item fourteen, which is a public hearing in consideration of a motion to approve application sub nineteen dash oh eight eleven, Continental Road LLC requests preliminary flat approval for a six-month commercial subdivision for phase one of Continental Road subdivision on thirty-three point three four eight acres located at seventy-one thirty, Veterans Memorial Parkway. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
To move.
I can hear a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Over.
Thank you, Mayor. Last item on the planning and development agenda for this evening is a major subdivision preliminary flat request, SUV nineteen oh eight eleven, located at seven one three zero, Veterans Memorial Parkway. The applicant and the landowner is both Continental Road LLC. It is projected to be in council district two, Councilman Jones District. The proposal, the applicant is requesting approval of the proposed preliminary subdivision flat for phase one of the Continental Road LLC subdivision as shown in the preliminary subdivision flat on exhibit E of the staff report, the proposed, first proposed phase will allow for the development of five commercial lots in a stormwater management area lot. The phase one proposed lots will be regulated by the CR, commercial retail, HOC, highway-oriented commercial, and the R four high-density residential zoning districts. The preliminary subdivision flat is exhibiting approximately one point zero one nine acres proposed by the driveway, showing this proposed road B and proposed road C per exhibit E. As the commercial subdivision is built out and the subdivision plan for proposed lot number five has been submitted for staff review approval, the developer will be required to obtain preliminary flat approval again from the city council for phase two of this commercial subdivision. Little background information on this property, council has seen this one a few times recently in the past couple of months. The parcel is currently undeveloped land with some site construction. Work activity currently underway. The subject property was previously occupied by Great Southern Sawmill, which has ceased operations a long time ago. In April two thousand nineteen, the city received an annexation and zoning map amendment application of A in nineteen oh four oh two and RZ nineteen oh four oh three to annex and rezone approximately thirty-three point three five acres. Twenty point three three acres was rezoned in commercial retail. Ten point three one acres was rezoned, R four high-density residential, and the remaining two point seven six acres was proposed to be public driveway area. In May twenty nineteen, the city approved the annexation and zoning map amendment request under ordinance number twenty nineteen dash oh seven. In July two thousand nineteen, the applicant rezoned at four point seven four acre portion of CR, commercial retail zone property, and HOC, highway-oriented commercial to allow for the construction of car dealership on proposed lot two. In August two thousand eighteen, the Georgia Soil and Water Conservation Commission approved the subject property's erosion, sediment, and pollution control plans. In May two thousand nineteen, the developer received approval for driveway construction and driveway encouragement activities from the Georgia Department of Transportation. In August two thousand nineteen, city staff additionally approved the civil engineering plan for phase one of the Continental Road commercial subdivision. And if you will turn your attentions to the monitors, just a brief presentation on this request. Location map, seven one three zero, Veterans Memorial Parkway. And here's the main exhibit of interest here. This is their preliminary subdivision flat that they have submitted for council's approval this evening. This has been reviewed by all, all staff departments, public utilities, planning and zoning, everyone that would normally review a building permit has reviewed and approved this. And some surrounding property photos, and I'll get back to the subdivision flat a second after I show you these. And that is it for the surrounding property photos. I'll get back to the subdivision flat. Staff has reviewed this request and has recommended approval of the proposed preliminary subdivision flat application, SUV nineteen oh eight eleven, with conditions to be met during the site construction and final plot, final plat process for phase one. Also, at the regularly scheduled meeting held on September third, two thousand nineteen at five p.m., the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the proposed preliminary subdivision flat and application, SUV nineteen oh eight eleven, with the following staff conditions. Number one, subdivision design and development of the property shall be in performance with the requirements of all state of Statesboro development regulations, including the city of Statesboro subdivision regulations, drainage ordinance, tree ordinance, and all other development standards of the city of Statesboro. Number two, two percent of the property acreage, approximately zero point six six seven acres shall be reserved for open green space areas reserved for community use, but shall be privately maintained by the owner, developer, or appropriate association. Open green space areas shall include uses such as village greens, commons, picnic areas, community gardens, trails, and similar low-impact passive recreational uses. Landowners' stormwater detention facilities may not be counted towards the open space minimum requirement unless the facility is a permanent later pond and is designed and intended for recreational access used by the occupants of development. The aforementioned open green space area requirement shall strictly adhere to the area proposed, lot number five. Number three, staff, final staff approval of the subdivision flat. Number four, final staff approval of the bylaws and restrictive covenants. Copy of the recorded subdivision flat and bylaws and restrictive covenants will be required to be submitted to the Department of Planning and Development, staff prior to any construction commencement on the proposed lots. Number five, all site improvements shall be constructed for the conditionally approved civil engineering plans from Maxwell Reddick and Associates and dated July twenty-third, two thousand nineteen. Number six, utility adjustments, including but not limited to, public rights away of water, sewer, gas, must be granted to the city as be necessary by the Department of Engineering. Number seven, final flat shall adhere to all requirements, Article three of the city of Statesboro subdivision regulations. And lastly, number eight, all other conditions of the previous zoning and annexation approvals in nineteen oh four oh two, RZ nineteen oh four oh three, and RZ nineteen oh six oh nine for this property must be met provided that they are not conflict with any of the conditions listed herein for application, SUV nineteen oh eight eleven. And I believe the applicant is here to see to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you, Owen. Is there anyone who wants to speak for this request?
Yes, my name is John Dotson with Maxwell Reddick. I'm here to answer any questions that you may ask before we discover anything from the plate.
All right, thank you. All right, is there anyone here to speak against the request? All right, seeing that there's no one here to speak against the request, is there a motion to close the hearing? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, any council discussion?
Question for Mr. Dotson, can you confirm that Walmart is not moving over there and Sanders will be built at the old Walmart?
Oh, no, I don't know, sir. No, should we?
Oh, you don't know? Oh, rumor still stays out there.
No, as to my knowledge, the large parcel in the center is under contract.
Car lot, yeah.
Yes, sir. The parcel to the left is also under contract, so we have two vacant ones that anybody's interested in.
But not big enough for a Walmart?
No.
All right, any further discussion?
Councilman Jones, this is your district, a question, Mr. Dotson. You referenced all the conditions that Owen done these recommend, were you able to read those?
Yes, sir, without any help.
My motion is strictly approval, but you have conditions.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's show that agenda item fourteen has passed, we're moving out to agenda item fifteen. Thank you. This is the first reading in consideration of a motion to move forward for orders twenty nineteen dash oh nine, and order submitting chapter six of the special code of orders revising license classifications, changing types of alcoholism, which is allowed to be served by licensees, changing licenses to run for the calendar year, and streamlining language involved in African tank around ships. Is there a motion to open the public hearing? Is there a second? All those in favor?
Mayor, council, this is a revision to chapter six, that's our alcoholic beverages license. Last year, we had, we had lengthy discussions about the definitions regarding restaurants, pubs, et cetera, which I'm sure you all remember, and also the underage admission. That was the emphasis for changing that to begin with, underage admission that's set out in section six nine. So in April, we did, we did a, we did a temporary resolution that would, that would allow the current licensees to, to, to get a six-month license for, under the new classifications, such as pub, restaurant. And so this is moving forward so that we can, so that we can revise the license types. What would happen here is that instead of having packaged beer, packaged wine, there would just be a package license. And then for the on-premises license types, those would actually be licensed, that they, that you would have, that that, the licensee would have a license for a pub, a restaurant, a bar, et cetera. And of course, the, it would, you know, law enforcement would determine if they are in fact compliant with that, especially as to the, as to the percentage of sales and those other, those other metrics that are used. So what this would do is, we would be able to just have those license types and also change the type of alcoholic beverage that would be allowed to be sold. What we used to have was the on-premises license for beer, wine, still, they pay extra depending on how many types they had. On this type, in this revision, beer, wine, and still spirits would all be allowed at um... On this type, in this revision, beer, wine, and still spirits would all be allowed at the on-premises establishments, and also beer and wine would be allowed at those package establishments. Furthermore, this would change the duration of the license. Not the duration, but the timeframe of them from this year to calendar year. So that's what we do with that interim resolution back in, back in May was to, or April was just to sort of set the clock different there. So it would run from January first to December thirty-first, and July one to June thirtieth. This would also obviously change what would, when the late fees would come into effect. And I would, I would like to point out, there is a typo redline in six seventy. That was just something I want to look at about the drive-through sales prohibition that, that will, that is already in the ordinance. It is redlined just for reference, so that would be not redlined in second reading. In, in addition to this, on October fifteenth, I would, I would present resolutions that would be two things. One would, one would waive the, waive the, those late fees for this application cycle just because of this, this won't all be, even if things go as well as possible, this will not be in place until October first, and that would mess up when the late fees would happen. So we would, I would ask to change the late fee just for this one side, one application cycle. And also, so that we would also need to bring forward to y'all a license fee schedule for consideration at October fifteenth. I mean, what happened with that interim resolution was we gave, we had this, we, you know, looked at it and, and took our best shot at what would be a reasonable license fee schedule for this, and it has been consistent with law enforcement expenditures, so I would commit that at the October fifteenth meeting of council for y'all to hopefully adopt that as well as the resolution that would, that would waive the late fees for this cycle. And I, of course, will answer any questions only asked about any redlines or any other issues. And the rest of it, there are also revisions about the temporary special event license. It's, it should be classified as permits, we have that. And there's also a slight, there's also a typo in there that allowed, that allowed sales at catered events, which is not allowed in the state also now, just says catered events, alcoholic beverages can be distributed. And also, there's a provision there that instead of having public agencies to do the background checks on applicants, that we would be able to formally do what has been practiced, and I believe, I believe this cogent is, is the service that we use currently to administer our background checks. The substantive measures in here are not, are very, very insubstantial, this is more of an administrative sort of, sort of revision to chapter six. The substantive issues here were litigated last year when we were discussing six three definitions and six nine underage admission hours and requirements. Like I said, I'll be glad to answer any questions on that.
Thank you, Colonel. All right, is there anyone who is to speak for a request? Anyone here to speak against? Is there a motion to close either? Is there a second? All of those in favor? Is there any council discussion? Seeing that there's no council discussion, is there a motion to move forward for the second reading?
Agreed.
Is there a second? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Let's show that agenda item fifteen will move forward. Agenda item sixteen is a consideration of a motion to award, award bid to Setco Sales Company, LSC, for purchase of four new solid tire wheel assemblies for transportation loader in the amount of twenty-four thousand one hundred eighty dollars. This item will be paid for solid waste disposal fund of revenues. Mr. Penny? Any discussion?
Mayor, we recommend you approve.
All right, any discussion by council? Seeing that there is none, is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? All right, all of those in favor? All right, we move down to agenda item seventeen, which is a consideration of a motion to award sales contract to Nancy Brothers for repairs to the cat loader in the God of West Coast Division of Public Water and Engineering Department not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars. This item will be paid from solid waste disposal fund revenue. Especially for mayor and council, we have, we have cost about thirty-four thousand dollars to make that repair, but just in case we find something where that repair is being done, that's why we're asking you to approve forty-five dollars so we won't have to delay. Okay, so we recommend that. Any discussion by council? Seeing that there's no discussion by council, is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? All of those in favor? All right, let's show that agenda item seventeen has passed. We move down to agenda item eighteen, consideration of a motion to award professional services contract to Wood Engineering in the amount of forty thousand dollars to provide a computer model and pressure study for the natural gas system with funds approved in the twenty-twenty capital improvement budget item NGD dash eight six. Mr. Penny?
Mayor, members of the council, as the system has grown, we need to hire this firm to create the new model for us in this firm and history of preparing the services for us, so therefore we need you to contract that not exceed forty thousand dollars.
All right, any discussion by council? Seeing that there's no discussion by council, is there a motion to approve?
Agreed.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of those in favor? All right, we move down to agenda item nineteen, consideration of a motion to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash thirty-one. The resolution will adopt the First Amendment to the fiscal year twenty-twenty budget for each fund of the city of Statesboro, Georgia, appropriating the amount shown in each budget as expenditure and expenses, adopting several items of regular limitations, and prohibiting expenditure or expenses from receiving the actual funding appropriate. Mr. Penny?
Mayor, members of the council, at the end of, at the end of fiscal year, you always run into a situation where a project wasn't completed, and so what we call these carry forwards, things that we might, might not have been able to get done, that need to be taken care of, so these funds are carried forward this year so, so that we can move forward with projects or, or purchase equipment. These funds come out of T spots, they come out of S plots funds, and then things in the enterprise funds, and it's not in our usual circumstances that should occur, and so we recommend that you approve the carry forwards that are presented to you today. It does not include any carry forwards in the general fund, that is, we will come back to at some point within the next, before this quarter is over, but, but it's just in case we recommend approving these carry forwards.
Thank you. Any discussion by council? Seeing that there's no discussion by council, is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? All of those in favor? Our issue for agenda item nineteen has passed. We move down to agenda item twenty, which is consideration of a motion to adopt resolution twenty nineteen dash thirty-two, a resolution to adopt First Amendment to the six-year capital improvement program for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, through twenty, twenty twenty-four through twenty-five for the city of Statesboro, Georgia.
And basically, Mayor, what you've done, what we asked you, you just approved the carry forwards, so now we're just a bit in the CIP to reflect those things that were carried forward.
Thank you. Any, any comments by council? Seeing that there's none, is there a motion to approve line item twenty?
Agreed.
All right, is there a second? You got it? All right, all of those in favor? All right, we move down to agenda item twenty-one, which is consideration of a motion. Our council authorized the mayor's entry to the entry into contract agreement with Freezer Nichols Incorporated in the amount of eight hundred and thirty-two thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars for engineering and surveying services to conduct an environmental feasibility study for the creek on the Blue Mound Squatchin'.
Mayor, members of the council, this evening, we had a presentation from Freezer Nichols in reference to the work that they were doing for the creek on Blue Mound, which, and, and that work session, I shared with you that you authorized staff in June to negotiate a contract with Freezer Nichols for this feasibility study and the, you know, technical work that needs to be done. And so we put this item on the agenda for the city council to consider approval of the contract. But we shared with you earlier this summer that when we got the initial fee, it was more than what we were willing to pay, and so I want to appreciate John Washington and, and the folks from Freezer Nichols for working with us to get the price down to what we believe is, is a reasonable price for the work that's going to be done. So to see the mayor and then the council, if you will, to move forward, I would recommend approval of contract with Freezer Nichols in the amount of eight hundred and thirty-two thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars.
Any discussion by council?
Yes, Mr. Penny, I just wanted to clarify that the eight hundred and thirty-two four seventeen, one hundred percent of that comes from the grant that was given, given or donated to the city, however you want to put it, by the governor deal?
Yes.
And that's the initial with five million dollar grant?
Yes, sir.
So then a hundred percent of that comes from the grant?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion by council? Seeing that there's no further discussion, is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? All of those in favor? All right, let's show that agenda item twenty-one has passed. We're to vote agenda item twenty-two, which is consideration of a motion to approve an employment agreement with City of Georgia. Motion to approve?
Agreed.
Is there a second? All of those in favor? All right, we move down to agenda item twenty-three, which is other business for city council.
Mr. Mayor, District One, as we all know, this week we had some unfortunate tragic events. District five. I'm sorry, District five. Thank you. It's been a long evening. I just wanted behalf, on behalf of the citizens there that I spoke, and then all of those here in Statesboro, thank the police department for their rapid responses to those public safety emergencies where gunshots were reported via nine one calls, and in fact, heard by officers that were already on the scene. It was night, it was dark, there was large crowds, and both instances, and I just can't thank the police department enough for their personal bravery to rush into the aid of those in distress in that situation. At night, in the dark, large crowds, lots of people hurt, and thank you, chief, for please pass along your personal.
Any other business for city council?
Yeah, a few folks out there in the audience, and we don't normally see them, just curious, you from East Georgia, OTC, or Georgia Southern?
We're Southern.
There we go.
That's how they say it.
Are you guys all the same here, these guys?
Good deal.
Which professor?
He's looking like a student.
You're behind the microphone there.
This is the public affairs board.
All right.
He's hiding behind the microphone there.
Um, I do, I do want to say, because, yeah, we have to kind of echo, Mr. Duke's comment. I do want to thank the police department for everything that they did do, it was unfortunate that we lost a life, but, you know, at, at the same time, they did everything they could to, to, to be able to save that life, so. But with that being said, I do kind of want to announce to the city, we had our final presentation, a site visit from the Georgia Initiative Community Housing today. Hopefully, the, the site visit and the presentation will start to, hopefully, what their expectations were, are, and hopefully, we'll be getting into that program. Hopefully, we'll know within the next week or so, week or two weeks, whether or not we get into that program. And states, what we get into that program is a big deal, because it brings a tremendous amount of resources to our city, so we are extremely excited about that. But more than that, I want to thank the staff for all the work that they did to put this together. The staff produced a seventy-one page application grant that included everything from maps to home information across the board. They did a phenomenal job throughout this entire process. I also want to thank the GIC team, these are individuals just from the community that came in to put that together. I know we have Mr. Alan Mudrow in the back, I'd thank you definitely, everything to do with BSDA and being a part of that as well. Owen, Jason, Mr. Penny, Kane, everybody else that, that worked with that is just greatly appreciated, and hopefully, we'll reap the benefits of that. So I just wanted to tell you guys, thank you. Thank you on behalf of the city, and those of you, you know, you guys work really well. We'll move on to agenda item twenty-four, which is city manager comments, are there any comments by city?
Mayor, I do have a few comments, and I would just say it's a team effort. So you were thanking us, and I also want to thank all the staff, Mr. Capri, Mr. Westbrook, and Mr. Terrence Brown, you know, they've worked all this hard to, to, to help us as well, so we appreciate that. I want to just mention three things to you, the way I just said. October first, seven thirty, eight a.m., a work session with you, with Bob O'Neill and us to talk about expectations. That is one of our regular council meetings, so if we can meet at seven thirty, we have coffee. We can roll from, from that right into the regular council meeting at nine o'clock, and this is going to be, we'll come down at nine and four from Charleston, South Carolina. And that is a personnel, personnel session, but.
Yeah.
And then the, I want to also mention that we are planning a community cleanup. We'll be giving out information to the public about that community cleanup. October fifth is, is the day of the targeting, so we need all communities across the city to be a part of that, and to get their team together for a community cleanup, and so we'll be giving that marketing material on our website and, and all across, we already been getting some word out on it, so. And so we want, we want to say that as well. And then I want to also refer to Mr. Peter Harden on an appointment matter we have some position on the planning board, which is called your attention, Mayor.
Yes, for the email that I sent you all, there are three posts that are, that have some vacancies, the city posts two, three, and five. They serve a four-year term. They are, each person who is on these, in these posts right now are willing to serve another four-year term, but if you have any other nominations, you can send them, email them to me, I'll get them out to you, and then we can, next council meeting, October the first, you know, we can discuss that and then make a motion to whoever you want in the post.
Thank you. Is that it? All right, we'll move down to agenda item twenty-five, which is general public comments. Now, she's time.
Yeah, my name is Paul Setters Allen. I'm just wondering, under what grounds am I denied by alcohol access?
Counsel?
I was going to say, the list that the police provided, you know, I'm sure it provided you.
Can we take a look at this list? Okay, I have thirteen.
I do want to put a pin in this. This is, this is a privilege. At this time, we will have that form of the court. Castle, this facility is in your district, so please be advised. All right, this is my stuff.
I wanted to look at this list, okay? I was working that shirt for a year, and over the year, I had thirteen incidents at my, at my, at my address, okay? Once again, I told you all I shared address with another bar. And based on these thirteen incidents, about eleven of them are basically, they're using the address of my business. So how out of thirteen incidents, the eleven of them are pretty much saying that it was the address thing. Came out far, we know label as a nuisance, and you are taking away from my will, my bill of to make money. I don't understand that.
A question, Mr. President, to council, this council, all time. All right?
Based on the, this is my district, based on the information supplied to us by our professionals, we rely on their judgment to deny you. we rely on their judgment to deny you the course.
And once again, sir, I'm actually, have you looked at these, have you looked at these thirteen items? Have you looked at them? Have you taken a look at them? And do you agree with what they're saying? Most of them, they're basically just use my address. Where I share a bar with, I share an address of, of parking lot with another bar. But they just, so what happens to you is the hangout's address. My club is not a nuisance. I would not admit to that. And I feel like right now, y'all are doing me a disservice. Y'all are taking away my ability to be in business and are causing me to lose thousands of dollars right now. And I really mean that. Y'all are going off a recommendation when everything is black and white, and you got to take consideration of what these items are. And I don't think y'all are taking account of what they are. People losing their IDs, somebody lost some marijuana in a parking lot, somebody was drunk in a parking lot. You're using that to label my business as a nuisance, and I can't accept that. And I will fight you tooth and nail if I have to, because I'm in business. And y'all are taking away my opportunity to make, to make money and to thrive as a business. But I'm not a nuisance. I don't do anything wrong. I don't, I'm, 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 I'm really appalled at it, honestly. To tell you the truth.
Any further discussion by council?
I appreciate what Mr. Allen's saying, and I, I applaud the cause we, police chief, police position, and also our attorney. That's our job is to protect the citizens' physical, so we have to, to guard them professionally with the citizens.
What's it mean, sir? I'm actually, have you considered what these are?
Yeah.
So you're telling me, you're going to take me out of business? I understand that's his recommendation.
Yes.
So you're going to take away my business because we're talking about people losing their wallets, someone is drunk in the parking lot, stuff like that. I, I, I just don't see it, sir. There's got to be something bigger than that to put me out of business.
But it's not my plan to put you down to me.
I, you voted against it as well. I mean, everyone voted against it. And my, I'm, I'm asking why? I think I'm older than that, Mayor. I understand he made the recommendation.
Right.
That's his job. I respect his decision. I've met with him. I'm willing to work with him. But y'all have not asked me one question at all about my business, at all. But you're approving everything else, and it's all kind of stuff going around the Statesboro around. You, you talk about the full issue, whatever happened to that? Whatever happened to that? It happened at another bar. I don't have that issue because chances, chances favor the prepared, and I'm always prepared. I can't stop everything, but I have more than adequate security. I'm way above, I stay on my own security, and I do anything because I know I'm at, um, when we get in a black business, I hate to say that, I'm at it behind, and I try to make sure, I try to stay ahead of everything else. And right now, y'all are doing me a disservice by not approving my alcohol license. I really believe that.
Okay. Thank you. Um, seeing that there's no further discussion, council, council, um, we recall, we'll close this matter and move on to, that's agenda item. I do want to, uh, say publicly, um, that I really wish the vote would have been a different way. Um, on this particular matter, uh, I'm of the opinion of how do we keep businesses open? Um, versus that, uh, um, of not. Um, so, so with that being said, we appreciate your passion for this, and I, I understand the passion for it.
I don't think y'all understand, sir.
Yeah.
I don't think y'all understand.
Okay. Um, there is a course of action, uh, where you get an appeal to.
Mm-hmm.
So, so it's not a decision, so.
Sir, I, I, this is a retable from the Alabama that I was two weeks ago. And all I'm saying is, I don't think y'all consider the facts. Y'all going off a recommendation, but I didn't consider the facts here. Where is the nuisance at? Why am I getting denied? Why am I getting labeled to be denied from the police department? On what grounds? I probably have less incidents than most bars around here. It's like, but yeah, if you're going off a recommendation, well, you can, people kill at other places right now.
I would suggest that you do that, that's what my suggestion to you.
Sir, it costs me thousands of dollars, and I'm moving me month to month to month to month. They consider they ran my insurance wrong, they put me off for another month. That was a disservice to them, that was on me, okay? Y'all are still putting me off, but it's costing me. I gotta pay, I gotta pay rent, month after month, after month. I'm in my business with y'all. Y'all are taking away my, 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 my ways to make a revenue.
So, uh, what we, what we're telling you is this, um, we tabled it last time. That was different from the appeal. What we're telling you now is that there is an appeal process. My suggestion to you as a business owner would be to appeal the process. You're not going to change any minds or any decisions tonight, council have shown that. So my suggestion to you is to move forward with the next step in the process. Of course, it's going to be the, it's going to be the appeal process.
And the same general hearing?
Yes.
What is going to change then, sir? If it's the same people on the appeal process, what is going to change? If you're not listening to it now and not considering the facts, what is going to happen later on? All you're doing is delaying, you're just delaying killing. You're just stabbing, and stabbing, and stabbing, and delaying killing. I'm going to be passionate about my business. I'm going to fight for my business. Right now, I feel like the members, the mayor, don't know what's in this situation right now. I don't think y'all are considering the fact. Everything is laid out in front of you. And it says, despite players, they, they was using the address. There's no thing, there's no thing as a nuisance that can hang out as far as going real. There's got to be something that's behind this. You can't tell me that you're taking away my chance to make money and to take care of my family and costing me thousands of dollars by putting this off when you're not looking at the facts. But yeah, you're saying no as far as giving them alcohol.
Okay, now, the mayor said specifically that I support you keeping your business open.
Mm.
Okay, so I'm telling you, do the appeal, Mr. Allen. Do the appeal. That's the best suggestion I've been able to make.
Thanks, sir.
You're welcome. All right, we'll move down to agenda item twenty-six, which is consideration of a motion to enter into executive assistance to discuss personnel matters, real estate, and/or potential litigation in accordance to OCG eight fifty dash fourteen dash three B. Is there a need for executive section, Mayor? Seeing that there's no, we'll move down to agenda item twenty-seven, which is a consideration of a motion to, uh, their motion. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.